Thank you all for your patience. Tonight is the first night that our youth council is actually joining us on panel, so I wanted to make sure that all of them were seated, and I think we have one more coming in there. I want to welcome you all to the last meeting that we're having in the month of March. Thank you for your cares and your concerns about the city of Greensboro. As always, we'll open up with prayer. Tonight, we'll ask that Councilman Neal will open us up with prayer.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. Continue to lead us and guide us. In Jesus' name, pray amen.
Amen. Thank you so much. Let the minutes reflect that everyone is present on tonight. That brings us down to number three on our agenda. That's the approval of March 4, 2023, regular session minutes. And Counsel, I give you time to read over those minutes if you have not done so. Once you're ready to approve those minutes, ask that you raise your right hand, signifying that you're ready. Miller's ready, River's ready, Smith's ready, Moore's ready. At this time, I entertain a motion and a second to adopt the minutes.
Second.
It's been second. Any further discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Unanimous decision. Thank you so much. Brings us down to number four, the approval of March 4, 2024, executive session minutes. Council, you should have a copy of those. At this time, I ask that you assign them and pass them to your left, signifying that you're ready to vote. Entertainer motion to approve the executive session minutes for March 4, 2024.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been second. Any further discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Unanimous decision. Thank you so much. Brings us down to number five, Mr. Marcus Cunningham.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
I will try to be brief with the goings on at the wastewater plant. First, I would like to talk to you about the city's biosolids report that's due annually on January 31st. This was a collaborative effort between us and Mike Bledsoe. The report that was submitted to both EPD and EPA were completed both on time and accurately. With the amount of biosolids that we dewatered and land applied, as well as the amount of solids that we usually produce from our digesters, it totaled this year at 245.33 dry tons. Soon, we're gonna have to consider, seriously consider adding some type of dewatering process at the wastewater plant, whether it be a centrifuge or a belt press or something like that. It would help us manage our biosolids a lot more efficient than the method that we're using right now. Our quarterly samples were just completed. We collected and processed samples of the raw influent that comes into the wastewater plant, as well as the treated wastewater, surface water from Town Creek, and the wells that are located on the city's land application site. We started collecting and submitting our sludge samples for analysis for next year's biosolids report that will also be due on the 31st of January of next year. The city passed its wet testing. Those samples were submitted last October, and we received notice that we did pass those tests in November of last year. We collected and submitted soil samples for both the city's affluent land application site and the biosolids land application site. Both of those results were included in the biosolids report that was just submitted. Last November, both myself and Mike Bledsoe inspected the three industrial users to be sure that they're in compliance with the permits that were issued to them by us. We collected samples of their respective discharges to ensure that their results that they submit to us on a monthly basis are correct. Those items will be inside the industrial annual report that will be submitted to both EPD and EPA by the end of this month. We are in a constant cleaning process of the, cleaning the affluent land application site out of there at the treatment plant. It's 125 acres, give or take, of timber that's back there, and we're constantly having to clean up some of the deadfalls that have fallen throughout the year. So at the beginning of next month, we're scheduled to rent a skid steer so we can clean up some of the bigger trees that have fallen back there over the past year. It's just more efficient just to kind of wait for a year or so. That way, because we don't have the equipment right now that the city owns to go back there and clean up those trees. The city does have a backhoe, but it would be too big and too cumbersome back there. It would make a mess, and it would damage sprinkler heads back there, and those are becoming increasingly costly. Did you, Ms. Butler? Okay. So, Ms. Butler, I asked her to give y'all a quote for a SCADA system. SCADA, which stands for Supervisor Control and Data Acquisition. This device, I would like to have installed on the city's eight current lift stations. This system, when it's put in place, will allow us to be able to, in real time, monitor what's going on at those lift stations. If we had a problem such as, like, a loss of power or a pump that is continuously running, a pump that's continuously running could run hot, and things these days are extremely costly. Replacing a pump at just our normal lift stations could cost upwards of $30,000 right now. So, having a SCADA system on there that's constantly monitoring and would notify us when there is an issue would and could save the city a great deal of money and keep us in compliance. Because one thing, like I said, we don't want to have happen is a loss of power, and somehow that lift station could overflow. And when that happens, we won't be, we won't notice it until we do our biweekly checks of those lift stations. One of our vertical turbine pumps out at the wastewater plant that pumps our treated effluence is gonna need to be repaired very soon. That pump has never been, it's never been repaired or anything, had anything outside of routine maintenance done to it since it was installed in the late 90s. Treating, pumping treated wastewater can be pretty hard on a pump, and it's been operating for well over the past two decades. Lastly, I think I've spoke to the mayor once before about getting another pickup truck for the wastewater plant. The guys are gonna need a truck for carrying around things like weed killer and weed eaters and stuff like that because we have to keep our lift stations cut and maintained. And I think it would just be best if they carried something like that on the back of a pickup truck. Right now, we commandeered basically the city's expedition that they had at City Hall, and that's not really a good way to haul around, you know, weed killer and stuff like that in the back of an SUV. Back to the SCADA system. I would like to get permission to go ahead and get the ball rolling on purchasing a SCADA system. I asked y'all about this. I originally brought this up, I do believe, at the retreat that the city had last August, and I think I brought it up to you at the last council meeting. I'm not, I just would like to go ahead and get something, get permission to see if I could go ahead and get the, get this system purchased so we could have our lift stations monitored on a 24-hour basis. That's all I have for y'all.
Mr. Cunningham, we did hear your comments about the needs of a vehicle, a pickup truck, and I promise you, we're working on that. I've been spread thin, so I haven't been able to go out and actually look at vehicles. But I promise you, it is in the near future that you guys will be getting vehicles. Next thing is the SCADA system. Can you give me, explain that to us just one more time, what it does?
Okay, so what SCADA will do is, like, right now, each individual lift station will be monitored by its own system, and it will report to us out at the treatment plant if there's a problem. Like I said before, we could have a power outage that we don't know about. You could just have lights go out, and that lift station's gonna be constantly filling up. If we don't know that there's a power outage, I'm using it as an example. If we don't know that there's a power outage, we're not gonna know that there was an issue at that lift station until we do our biweekly checks. Let's say we have a float or something that controls, that turns the pumps on and off. If a float goes bad and it has a pumps that continuously runs, those pumps are submerged in the wastewater that's inside the wet well. That's what keeps the pumps cool. If it pumps it dry and continues to pump with no water to cool it down, you could take a chance on ruining a pump. And some of those pumps are pretty, really, really costly, you know, upwards of $30,000 or so. And I think with a SCADA system there, monitoring it, if we did have an issue, we can go out in real time and fix the issue and stop the pump from, let's say, running continuously. Or if we had a power outage, we could see what was the reason why we lost power. That'll keep us from, A, going over and having a spill, a potential spill, or B, having a potential fault that could greatly cost us with replacing or repairing a pump. And a lot of the pumps that the city have are, they have a lot of age on them. Our newest pump stations over at the cottages, probably the oldest pump station we have right now was, I think it was in 96, and those are the original pumps. So they pump constantly every day, and we don't want to have to go to a lift station and there's a pump that has burned up because it basically ran itself dry because of a float that caused the problem. We could go out and, we could go out and repair it because we would know it instead of us just coming up on it on our biweekly checks.
Any other question coming from the council?
Yeah, I have one question, Mr. Cunningham. Going back to the very beginning of your presentation, you talked about something, it was something there. Look at the very first part. It seemed like it might have been something that you would want to purchase. You didn't speak of, no.
The very first thing that I spoke about was the biosolids report. That was what we did in conjunction with the city engineer.
Okay, what was your next thing?
After that was quarterly sampling. And the only thing that I've asked for as far as a purchase was the SCADA system that I was just...
Okay, I missed it. I missed it. I talked to you.
Okay.
What question, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
And, Mr. Cunningham, the lift stations that you're, how many lift stations would this SCADA system cover?
Well, currently, we have eight. The school, once it's built, I think the, there's gonna be a lift station there that I'm pretty sure the city's gonna inherit it, so that'll put us at nine. I'm almost certain that Mike Bledsoe is gonna make them put SCADA on that lift station when it's built. But like I said, we have lift stations that were built, that were made in the late 90s, and they need to have a system on there. That way, we could monitor them and not be, not have an unfortunate surprise when we arrive at them on our weekly checks.
Okay, thank you, sir.
So, Counsel, you've heard the request coming from Mr. Marcus Cunningham in regards to the water treatment plant and asking for a SCADA system in the amount of $4,897.40. I entertain a motion at this time to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been second. Any further discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Unanimous decision. Thank you so much, Mr. Cunningham.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is number six. Sherri Thomas requests for road closure on April 20 of 2024 for Doggy Dash 5K route. Is she here? Counsel, I think you have those documents in your packet. Ask that you would look over. Give you a minute to look over. Ms. Kendrick, this Doggy Dash is on the same day as the Jubilee. Would it have any interference or impact? Can you come up? Saturday, May 4. Well, it's different. The days are different on the... Okay, it's different. Oh, here's the same, April 20th on the agenda, but it's changed on the actual report.
Okay.
The flyer says, "May 4." Your agenda says, "April 20." So it's May 4.
So it's May 4?
May 4. At this time, I entertain a motion and a second to approve the request of road closure on April, I'm sorry, May 4, 2024, for the Doggy Dash 5K route.
Question, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
It have on here the date, it don't have a time. You know what time it gonna be?
On that flyer. On that next page.
She didn't give you a time?
Give you the time.
It don't have a time on it, what I'm saying.
Usually in the morning time. 9:00 a.m., 9:00 a.m.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Motion still on the table.
Motion to approve.
Sir.
It's been second. Any further discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Unanimous decision. Thank you so much. Brings us down to number seven. Camille Alley requests for alcohol wine license for T Fuel Store 2480 Meadowcrest Road, Greensboro, Georgia.
Hello, Mayor and City Council. I'm standing up here to get a approval for a beer and wine license for the T Fuel Gas Station and Convenience Store located right outside the Home Depot at 2480 Meadowcrest Road in Greensboro, Georgia. We are buying this property and are looking to make more investment into Greensboro as we've done with Moon's supermarket in the past, and now we're moving into T Fuel.
Did you do the fingerprints?
Yes, the fingerprints have been completed.
Did you turn it in?
Yes, they should have been turned in, correct. Yes.
At this time, I entertain a motion to approve Mr. Camille Alley's request for alcohol wine license for T Fuel Store located at 2480 Meadowcrest Road. Entertain a motion and a second.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been second. Any further discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Unanimous decision. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Can I say something? I know you fine, you fine. But in the future, can we, I mean, we sit up here and it'd be like, we don't know. You know, we got to ask the question, well, did he turn this paper in to the city? We need to have all that stuff before we let people come here in front of us, and we vote on stuff and we don't even have all our information. At least we think we have and don't have it, or we may have. It just don't look good. It just don't look good for the proof stuff, and we don't know whether we, I mean, we say he did his fingerprint. Supposed to be that police department. All that should have been with us, with you at least, and noted. But anyway, we need to be out on that one.
Make clear no sense from Councilman Miller. Thank you so much. Brings us down to number eight. Kendrick Ward requests for road closure on Southland Jubilee.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So I have two road closures tonight in front of you. The first one is for Southland Jubilee, starting the road closure on Friday evening, the 19th, at 5 o'clock on North Main Street. We will close North Main Street, Port Street, and Green Street to be able to load in vendors, and then we will close South Main Street, starting at 6:00 a.m. the next morning. And the event runs from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on April 20th.
Counsel, you've heard the request coming from Ms. Ward in a quest for the road closure for Southland Jubilee and also Moonlight on Main. At this time, I entertain a motion to approve. Motion and a second.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been second. Any further discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Unanimous decision. Thank you so much.
Was that both of them, or did you want me to do Moonlight separately?
No, you go ahead.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Number nine is the second reading for annexation, rezon application for AX 2024-02 Warehouse in our company of annexation rezon application AX-2024-03 Green County School District. City Attorney.
Mr. Mayor, this is the second reading for the proposed annexation. This property is immediately south, across I-20, would link up to the proposed school. It's gonna be a total of two parcels owned by a warehouser and three parcels held by the Board of Education. If approved, this will connect us to the Board of Education property that proposed where we've been working for a couple of years now. This is the second reading, so this would be effective if approved by the council, and this got a unanimous decision from the Planning Commission when it was presented for them for a recommendation.
Counsel, you heard the request. At this time, I entertain a motion to approve the annexation of the warehouse, warehouser property. Entertain a motion and a second.
Our motion.
Second.
It's been second. Any further discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Unanimous decision. Thank you all so much. Number 10 is unfinished business.
Mr. Mayor, that included the Board of Education property as well?
Yes, sir. At this time, I don't have an unfinished business. Councilman Moore, do you have any unfinished business?
Oh, nothing, Mr. Mayor.
City Attorney.
No, Mr. Mayor.
City Clerk, do you have any unfinished business? Councilman Miller, do you have any unfinished business?
No, I just have a question. This is just some information for us, Ms. Butler. Thank you, that's it.
Councilman Rivers, do you have any unfinished business? Councilman Smith?
I just have one question. I know one time before, we had discussed reaching out to the state or either the county for the ramps going on and off of 20, the lighting not there. Have we had an update on that?
Yes, we actually received some information on updating those lights. We're responsible for some of those lightings out in that area, and so we're looking at replacing them. Just received the information last week, so we're going over it right now.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Neal?
Nothing.
Brings us down to number 11, new business. Counsel, in your packet, we have estimates on street repair. We had three. One proved not to be, meet our expectations, and another project that they did. So you have two. You have one from Garrett Paving, and you also have one from Overstreet Asphalt. Want you to take a look at those. We can have a discussion in regards.
Question, Mr. Mayor. Have we used Garrett before?
Now, I'm not knowledgeable using Garrett before. Mr. Porter reached out to these companies and got these, gathered these estimates. I entertain a motion and a second to accept either one.
When are we planning on doing these?
Soon as possible, Councilman Smith.
Is it a guarantee? Because I know last, we dealing with roads and stuff. We pave them, and then we look like we back paving them and back paving them. Is this gonna be a solid foundation that we can stand on and make sure that...
Well, you know, this is just basically cutting out those bad areas and then patching them up. It won't be a full...
No, 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 it'll just be the projects that we got highlighted.
Yes, sir.
So this gonna be a beginning stage?
This will be the beginning stage, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, this final will come out of T spot.
I make a motion, Garrett Paving Company?
It's been second to receive the estimate from Garrett Paving Company.
Yes, sir.
I entertain, it's been motion. Any further discussion? And second, any further discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Unanimous decision. Thank you so much. Looks like we gonna get started on getting some street work done, street repairs done.
Are they really starting now, Mr. Mayor?
As soon as we make the call in the morning and let them know that they've received, okay to go ahead. Our next thing I have is, Boys and Girls Club has reached out to us asking that we would, the city and the Boys and Girls Club would tag team again in having a... in having a community basketball game. I think we, they want us to, uh, look over our calendars and see what date we can come up with. So I ask you to, in near, near future, that you guys take a look at your calendars and, uh, get back with, with our clerk and let her know what, what date best fits you or fits us. And that way we can get back with them as soon as possible. Councilman Moore, do you have any new business?
Uh, nothing, Mr. Mayor.
City Attorney, do you have any new business?
No, Mr. Mayor.
City Clerk, do you have any new business? Did I forget anything? Councilman Mills, do you have any new business?
No, just one thing. Mayor, can we just, uh, at least let the citizen know when we talking about the Boys and Girls Club, we getting together to play basketball. This is a fundraiser for the Boys and Girls.
Absolutely.
That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman woman Rivers, do you have any new business?
No.
Councilman Smith, do you have any new business?
No, sir.
Councilman Neil?
No.
All right. Brings us down. Well, let me do this tonight, since we have our youth council on board.
Yeah.
Youth Council, do you have anything that you'd like to discuss on tonight? No, sir. All right. Nobody. All right, all right. Brings. Do you have anything you would like to discuss?
No.
All right. Brings us down to number 12, public comments. How many cards, dude? Just one. I have one for Ms. Katrina Breed. I don't have a subject matter. Annexation. How you doing, Ms. Breed?
Uh, good afternoon.
Good evening.
It's good to be here again. I was expecting to at least learn what the rezoning, uh, entail. I'm assuming that there will be some type of buildings because usually when you rezon in annex, it's just not open property. Usually something is placed on that property. And I'm sure you know what it is, even though it wasn't mentioned in the meeting. Uh, I understand, and I may be misinformed, that some of that property is going to include housing. If that is so, I'm wondering whether there's been any investigation, any research on whether the infrastructure can support any additional housing. Now you already, and I'm not even gonna say how many I heard, cause it couldn't be that amount, but it's over a thousand. You know, I was here about two years ago and there are going to be at least 300 housing, uh, and that's, that's a done deal. That's gonna happen. And whenever I drive up and down in the area where some people live, I'm not gonna say what people, lest I be accused of, you know, blank baiting. When I drive up and down this area, it's always a hole somewhere. It's like, it's a hole over here this week. Two weeks later, they digging over there. And I'm wondering are they improving or just patching? At some point in time, this body is gonna have to be responsible for decisions that it make concerning the infrastructure. I'm very concerned about the 300 that are gonna be next to me. I mean, it's a done deal. Can the infrastructure support that? Because see, when these people build these buildings, and I'm hoping there ain't no 1,200 houses in the rezoning that was made. I'm hoping I was misinformed, even though I was told by a very reliable source, but you know how that goes. They gonna be gone. They gonna sell those houses. And I was listening to Mr. Cunningham, Mr. Cunningham, can the infrastructure support the 300 that are coming when you got problems that you approved? I don't know if that's patching or fixing either. When you approved just today for the ones that are here, those other houses are gonna be here in a year. What's gonna happen is it's gonna affect my little water bill, which is the largest water bill I have out of three counties, by the way. It's gonna affect taxes, which I will commend you. Thank you for not raising them too much more. And when you do these things, you have to do your research. Now, I was here before, two years ago, I said, please don't move no more liquor stores. And I, I forgot how many liquor stores there were. But you approved a liquor store for Hilltop. And I'm, I, I challenge uh, each of you to go by what, the, the, the place that you approved for a liquor store or to sell liquor. I'm not gonna say a liquor store, but to sell liquor. It's rundown, it's an eyesore. And whenever I go into my, I, I want you to go by that. That is a reflection of the decisions that you make. Not to mention the most recent one, that just a little bit of investigation. There were three counties that rejected the person you all embraced. And that involves taxpayers' money. I'm just pleading with you. And, and I know, uh, you asked the question of, I think, Mr. Cunningham, uh, the, the expression was, uh, would you explain it one more time? Sometimes you need more than one more time. Sometimes you need to meet with this man and say, listen, this is on our agenda. I don't understand a word of what's going on. Because what's gonna happen if you're not real, real careful? You're gonna bankrupt the city. The county just wait and they can, they can handle it. They have proven they can handle it. So when you make these decisions and you gonna, I'll be back here, well, I'll be over there Thursday. I'll be back here on the first. Just, you know, it's a big responsibility. And I, I would bet money it's more than you ever thought you would have to do. I know it's hard. I know, but see, you took that responsibility to be responsible to the citizens. And if you think you can't do it, let somebody else run. But I believe each of you have it in you to do it. But it's a full-time job. It's a full-time job just trying to keep up with everything that's going on. But, and that's just as a citizen. That's not as a person who's responsible for these decisions. Remember what your infrastructure can and cannot stand. Because the state of Georgia ain't gonna let you go forever with a poor infrastructure. They'll move in. Except they'll tap on the county's window and say, can you handle it? Now, do you, anybody in here think the county can't handle the city's business? Thank you. And this is just a prayer. I am so glad I have most of my years behind me because the future looks a little suspect to me. And God bless all of you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Breed. I would like to say one thing in regards to your comment, though. There is no liquor store in the city limits of Greensboro.
Well, let me say this. I was here, you can check it out. There was a request for liquor sales at Hilltop. And that was a gentleman, I came here and I spoke against it. And that was a gentleman, he wasn't from here. He was buying Hilltop store. He wanted to sell liquor. And I was against it. You all fooled. Now, that's not a store that's selling liquor. And I'm sure that, because I came to the meetings here. Because I, I counted all of the liquor in the town, including, you know, liquor is beer.
Yeah, that's right. It was not liquor. It was a convenience store. And you're right, it is a nice store. I mean, that, that, that owner should be held accountable for doing something with that building. Uh, but just to clear it up, it was a convenience store.
Yes.
Uh, for beer sale.
That's right.
No alcohol.
Yeah, and I, I apologize. I used beer and liquor interchangeably. Uh, but the bottom line is there was enough beer being sold all over the place. Uh, it was at least 10 different places you could go buy beer. And the bottom line is the place is an eyesore. And the real bottom line is that you approved it. Thank you for your attention.
At this time, I entertain a motion to go on executive session for one personnel matter.
Motion?
Second.
Hold on. Let's counsel that chief of sickening that he doesn't need that. So we'll let that motion die. He doesn't. I entertain a motion to go in. You're right, we can do that.
Uh.
Go ahead.
Uh, one request to go into executive session, personnel.
You heard the question going to executive session for a personnel matter. I entertain a motion and a second.
Motion?
It's been second. It's been second. Any further discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Unanimous decision. Thank you so much. You all give us just a moment. Youth Council will allow you all to be dismissed at this time.